Good evening, everyone, and happy Wednesday to you and to yours. This is the day the Lord has made. We came to rejoice and be glad in it. Welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary where the whole household of God is welcomed, wanted, affirmed, celebrated, safe, secure.
Amen.
Amen, somebody. We will talk about that a bit tonight, but we're certainly in the midst of a cultural tipping point in some ways. And although we understand sometimes where reactions and overreactions come from, there are certainly a lot of people that it can put, these pendulum swings can put into harm's way. And we want to be mindful of that tonight. Uh, this is Inclusion 101. We're gonna talk uh, tonight uh, from uh, the book, The Gospel of Inclusion, the late, great uh, reformer, church reformer, Bishop Carlton D Pearson's 95 Theses, uh, to Christendom in general. Can you just pause for a moment and see why that book was necessary? Just take a, take a big ol' sniff right now of what you're, what you're smelling. In popular, in the popular prevailing culture that's working uh, under the flag of Christianity. Just big deep breath of what's out there right now. What's being said, used, weaponized in the name of Jesus of Nazareth. There's a necessity for this book. This book was not written out of uh, frivolity. It was not written uh, necessarily out of joy or even uh, out of uh, it to entertain himself as a scholar. This book was written out of demand. There was a universal demand for this book to come forth. And we give thanks uh, for the late Carlton Pearson for uh, for his life and for his living. Amen, amen to that. Uh, we're glad you're here, whether you're curious tonight, cautious, whether you are mad, uh, concerned. Every voice is welcome in the house. Eat what you can. Uh, we might, we might trigger something. We know that truth sets you free, but might, might piss you off first, and that's okay. Uh, be angry and sin not. Religion tells us what to think. Spirituality teaches us how to think. In essence, religion is uh, kind of a system of particularities. Spirituality is more of a, a, a methodological framework or even uh, an academic approach in some ways, an openness to the moving of the Holy Spirit. We're gonna jump into our devotion uh, tonight. This is Fully Awake 365. It's the month of January and we're selling a lot of these right now. Apparently people either like them or they're trying to start their day off in, in a higher vibration.
We got two more this week.
Yeah, people are from all, all over God's green earth, just fine. This is January 22nd. It's the month of letting go. I was with my family uh, this past Sunday to, to celebrate my sister's belated 60th because of the snowstorm. And one of my closest cousins, I consider her a sister, said to me, let them. We were bemoaning the fact of just being difficult in this season to keep your vibration higher as you see things uh, coming to the surface that have pretty much always been there. And so we know that uh, they're not being created right now. They're just uh, at the mercy of stimuli that's causing some of this to come to the surface. But she just looked at me and said, let them. It, don't let it affect your vibration. I said, that's a good word. Just let it be.
Actually, a new book by Mel Robbins.
Oh, is it? There you go. It's a new book. Let, let them, little shameless plug for Mel Robbins. All right, uh, today's uh, devotion is called Let Me Be Spiritual. Thank you, uh, Donald Lawrence and the Tri-City Singers. What a powerful song. In, in inclusive work, sometimes it's difficult to find both good lyrics that kind of match up with where we are in consciousness and, and good music. If you can get the lyrics and, and the music together, we got something that we can hang on to for a while. And so, let me be spiritual. Yeah, or spiritual is a, is a Donald Lawrence song that we sing probably, probably a dozen times a year at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. So we give thanks for that. All right, let's grab our affirmation at the very top. Today or tonight, I set my intention to make the main thing, the main thing, or to keep it that way. I will not get lost in the smallness of rules, clothes, prayers, or symbolism. I'm an intelligent, awakened, self-aware spirit being with the capacity and courage to see what is beneath the surface. I do not need a title, a reserved seat. Come on, let's talk about the prevailing culture, a special parking space that slipped into the church, or a fancy robe to be spiritual. I'm created in the image and likeness of God and good. And tapping into my God-given divinity is the most spiritual thing I will ever do. So there's a, there's a lot of Rs here at the beginning of our devotion. This is uh, in, in honor of the alliteration, alliterative uh, skills of Carlton Pearson. If you ever heard him talk, he would just rattle off all words that sounded the same or began with the same letter. Uh, rules, regulations, rituals, restrictions, regimens, religion. Yeah, that's, that's for some reason inherent. Uh, somewhere kind of in this minutia, uh, this mad monotony, we lose sight of the main thing while desperately chasing a passing grade. What does, what does that mean? Jesus said, you guys are kind of losing sight of this thing. You're worried about where you sit, what kind of clothes you wear, how to wash your hands, but you're not worried about poor people. You're actually taxing them or burdening them more. Jesus said to them, you're putting, you're putting burdens on their shoulders that their fathers could not carry and you cannot carry yourselves. Making them travel for hundreds of miles to buy a sacrifice, uh, to atone themselves in the temple. That is, that was the impetus for Jesus cleansing the temple was the selling of sacrifices. He was saying, hey, you're, you're price gouging. These people can't carry these sacrifices with them, you know, halfway across uh, across the Middle East. And you're, you're just kind of price gouging them. You're trying to, uh, you're trying to consume or uh, what, commodify the love of God, the, the redemptive power of God. And so Jesus encourages us, let's kind of make the main thing, the main thing. You wash the outside of the cup, yet inside you are full of death. Isn't that interesting? He, he scourged the uh, the religious order and said, you, you give so much credence to what you wear, how you present your offering on, on, in the temple, yet you have, you have neglected the weightier matters of the law. What did Jesus say were the weightier matters of the law? Justice and mercy. Are you, are you feeling justice and mercy right now? From the prevailing Christian culture? Is that what we're feeling is justice and mercy, the weightier matters of the law? Interesting. Uh, so several years ago, um, I spoke at a New Thought Church uh, in the U.S. And I was very excited because I had gone through a, a, a season of deconstruction where I thought uh, I would experience something really open and it was. I, I don't want to besmirch or disparage um, uh, New Thought expression because I, I, in some ways I'm a New Thought practitioner. But I thought, man, I'm, I am a little tired with all the stuffiness and the, the rules and the regulations and the restrictions. I'm gonna have a new experience today as I'm, even though I'm the speaker, I'm gonna enjoy this worship experience. And so I was sitting there uh, on the pew, waiting for my turn to speak. And so the uh, the leader of the service said, we're gonna have a moment of meditation. And so there was a little bit of instruction of how to hold your hands, how to place them in your lap, to open your aura, to uh, hold your chin, kind of your, I even took a couple of meditation classes when I was taking um, s- socially engaged Zen Buddhism in my master's work. And there's a lot of instructions. There's a lot of instructions in my, in most religions. How do you stand? How do you genuflect? How do you bow? What do you do? We have some ritual at Spirit and Truth. We're certainly not above it. But I, I wasn't holding in this moment of meditation, I wasn't holding my hands exactly the way that is, I guess, kind of uh, accepted in those spaces. And I was, instead of holding my hands like this, I was just kind of, I was just kind of letting them rest together in my lap. And someone beside me said, you're, you're not holding your hands correctly. And I just, not angrily, but just literally, I just responded, I, I don't do religion. And the parish, the parishioner looked at me like, what do you mean you don't do religion? I was like, I, I, I'm not gonna be told how to hold my hands. And then I had to get up and speak while she looked at me like this the whole service. The point I was making was I have come out of Pentecostal holiness expression. I didn't travel to your New Thought, open, inclusive, esoteric community to go back into religion. Isn't religion kind of everywhere? You can, you can leave one religion, go to the next. If you take the same consciousness and you need rules, regulations, you need a taskmaster, you need all that. It's just gonna kind of uh, follow you into that same. So in essence, let's try to keep the main thing, the main thing. Rituals are great. We connect to them. We have bread and wine. We have robes. We wear crosses. We wear interfaith symbols. There's no, nothing necessarily intrinsically wrong with them, but the main thing is love, peace, joy, justice, mercy, inclusivity. That's the main thing. All right, let's grab our prayer at the very bottom together. The name for God is common sense. Don't give up your common sense when you, when you get all god, godly. I desire to be spiritually free, not religiously restricted. Enable me to make the main thing, love, peace, and joy. Well, Saturday, that's what CDP would say. Okay, uh, this is week 50. We're gonna talk tonight about the misperception of original sin. I sent you some questions uh, this evening. Uh, number one is sex a sin? If it's not just for procreation? Is it, is it a sin? Is it sinful to have passion to, to respond to that passion? Is sexual foremarriage a sin? Is, it's considered uh, fornication in some circles, but I don't know that we can necessarily prove that scholarly from, from the scripture. Um, what, what is, what should be a, a sexual, healthy sexual practice in, in our lives? Is being born from a sinful act sinful? If your parents uh, had conceived you in what would be traditionally considered a sinful way? Uh, is that, are you sinful because they sinned in conception? Uh, and finally, uh, is just being born a sin? That's Augustinian idea. Yeah, just being born, just being born, it's a sin. Number two, are religious definitions of sin ultimately control mechanisms? Are they, are they meant in their specific definitions and their applications? Are they meant specifically to control us? Number three, uh, do you find it, here's the, here's the, here's the spice. Here's the habanero pepper right here. Let's, 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 let's feel it. Let, let it burn your mouth a little bit. Do you find it ironic that Christian fundamentalists, conservativists, uh, literalists want to erase America's original sin, slavery, colonization, from history books while building mega churches on teaching humanities' original sin? Is it hypocritical to say that critical race theory that involves some painful history of this country, whether it be uh, the enslavement of, of African peoples or the colonization and taking land of indigenous peoples, America's original sins, removing those from the books? Is that hypocritical to do that and then to build enormous ministries on pounding into people's heads that you are a victim of humanities or Adam's original sin? Yep, leave it to me to uh, put, to put those ideas into conversation. I'm gonna give you a fourth one tonight. I don't want you to write it down. You don't need it. Uh, and it's just this, do you, do you need just some love tonight? Do you need prayer? Do you need, you just feel like you're safe in this community? Uh, people have been reaching out to me uh, the last couple of days uh, just saying, what's gonna happen? What is this? What is this rhetoric? I'm so proud of one of my closest friends, our first uh, ordained transgender minister, Dr. Elijah Nicholas, has been um, on one of the NBC affiliates today. Uh, just talking through uh, fear, anxiety specifically to the transgender community after some of the remarks, uh, the presidential remarks uh, at the inauguration. Uh, whatever, wherever you land uh, politically, uh, I've not quite ever been exposed to a president who would speak so uh, harshly at an inauguration, both of people in society, of former administrations, um, just really classless. I have to just say, say what's in my heart. And so if you're here and you're not on my specific political um, bandwidth, uh, then I apologize for that. But it, it is problematic at times to be uh, an architect of inclusion and to try to cater to all people, especially in this political climate. I am a big fan of the late John McCain. I certainly have a lot of respect for Mitt Romney. I did not vote for him, but I have a lot of respect for gu- uh, Governor uh, Kemp, Brian Kemp in Georgia, who would not overturn e- election results in Georgia. I don't prescribe to a lot of, a lot of his um, his legislation, but I do think he's in some ways a person of honor, who honors the Constitution in some ways. There are many Republicans that I, I have a lot of honor and respect for. This is a different climate and Christianity is being turned into something that it was never meant to be. And so if you need a little calming of your anxieties tonight, you can reach out to us. We certainly want to be there for you. Week 50, the misperception of original sin. This is pages 69 and 70 in Carlton Demetrius Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion. The infamous concept of original sin is derived from scriptures like Psalm 51:5. Behold, this is David speaking, I was shaped, shapen'd, uh, King James, in iniquity and in sin did my mother conceive me. So that leaves a little bit of ambiguity, some, some space to negotiate the text, as we would say. Was the, was the act sinful? Was the being born sinful? Where this, where the Bible is not completely clear, theologians speculate. That's where we get into a little trouble at times. Based upon that verse of scripture, I was taught that I was innately sinful from conception. It indicts us from the outset. Thanks to Saint Augustine, or Augustine of Hippo, uh, this idea became doctrine. I don't want to completely disparage Aug- Augustine or Saint Augustine. He had a real understanding of the, the, this kind of intrinsic divinity where there's something innate within us that wants to be called into God's presence, that, that wants to agree with the image and light, that God will go to any measure uh, to wake up that divinity, to call us back into, into relationship. I'm very grateful for that piece of him. However, he was very much of the um, the, the puritanical prudishness uh, that we see uh, of fear constrain, uh, fear constructs, very much about hell uh, and hell being punitive, not purgative, hell being endless torture, not a temporary teaching, which is what we find from a lot of the other patristic early church fathers, uh, like Clement of Alexandria, Gregory of Nisa, uh, Origen for sure, Pantanus, uh, many of them uh, give us a different, even uh, Arneus at, at points. Um, and so we, we find a little bit of discrepancy in some of the early church uh, fathers. Uh, based upon the, that verse, uh, sorry, thanks to Augustine, this and, this idea became doctrine. Why thanks to Augustine that this, that this idea be- uh, become doctrine? Augustine uh, or Augustine came into kind of prominence and popularity uh, kind of near the time of Constantine. Constantine was not necessarily a follower of Jesus, but uh, used uh, the uh, the kind of Christian symbols to unite the Roman Empire. It wasn't specifically catalyzed by the desire to be a follower of Jesus of Nazareth or his teachings. Constantine wanted to unite the Roman Empire to take world dominance. They were, if you're familiar with the Greco-Roman uh, expression, there were so many different gods, pantheons of gods, understandings, even in the Christian uh, sect, uh, man, you had the, the Gnostics, you had the Essenes, you had the Hellenists, you had uh, kind of the, the, the Christians who were still really Jews, but leaning to Chris- there were a lot of different understandings uh, of, of Christianity in the way and the beginning. Uh, asceticism, you had uh, apocalyptic uh, Christians who believed that Jesus was coming back in just a few days. Um, you had those who were uh, ascetic and did not want to get abstained from sexual activity because they thought it was their reasonable duty to God coming out of the, the Pauline teachings. So in that way, not only did Constantine have a very diverse, kind of pluralistic um, society religiously, he also had the desire to, to kind of bring the people together. Why? We need to be one people, under one God, so we can conquer the world together. In the name of Jesus, let's conquer the world. That sounds familiar with what's going on, doesn't it? Yeah. All right, so I wanna, I wanna give you a little pushback to Psalm 51 and verse 5. This is also in the Psalms and you can just write it down. This is Psalm 139, verse 14. I praise you because I am fearfully and wonderfully made. So we talk about biblical contradictions. Some Christian apologists don't like to perceive that because they want the Bible to be univocal. The Bible is supposed to be multivocal. Have you ever read uh, The Wisdom of Solomon where we, uh, where we um, glean the truths that safety, security, wisdom is found in a multitude of counselors? Think about that. So if, if we get some sense of security and safety from a multitude of counselors, what if all of those counselors said the exact same thing to you? Then there's not really a diversity of counsel from, for which you can then contextualize for your own application. So if you only have people saying the same thing to you, there's really no safety. Where we become safe, wise, secure, stable is when we can have many different perspectives at the same table, bringing to us different angles. And in the, in the disparate uh, voices that we have, we find a level of strength. All bases. If no one is speaking diversely to us, then no one is talking to our blind spots, which all of us have. And if you don't think you have one, you're even more blind. Yeah, all of us have, have blind spots uh, in spaces. And so uh, we don't have to, we don't have to throw the Bible away because it's not univocal, because it's not inerrant or it doesn't speak with one voice. There are 66 different books. Collect, the Bible is not a book, remember, it's a collection of books. And in that collection of 66 different books, we have a little over 30 authors. Uh, that's, that's debatable in scholarly circles. Um, uh, some un- most unknown, some pseudonymous, some pseudographic. So pseudonymous, pseudonymous writing just means somebody was kind of writing as somebody, but they maybe were close to them, like a scribe. Peter, we know is illiterate. Uh, and so for Peter to write epistles is, is impossible. But a scribe of Peter, close to him, arguably wrote the Epistles of Peter. But when we get into other books, some of, some of the Pauline epistles, these, these are not people that were even close to Paul. Uh, there's only six of the 13, si- six or seven of the 13 Pauline epistles that were, that are, that scholars know Paul wrote. The other seven are either pseudonymous or the word here is pseudopig- pigrifa or pseudographic, which means it's just a total imposter. It's just somebody who said, I, I'm gonna act like Paul because it's a famous name and maybe my, maybe my book will get published. Um, and so we, we kind of, we kind of get the difference. The point I'm making is we don't have to throw the Bible out because it's not univocal. It is supposed, it's intended to be multivocal. Paul and, and Peter are supposed to disagree. Uh, the, the uh, the reformer Martin Luther is supposed to be upset about the Book of James that he called an epistle of straw. Did you know Luther had his own canon of scripture and did not, did not include the Book of James? He said, that doesn't belong in the Bible. Why? Because James challenged justification by faith. He said, okay, I get all your faith talk, but what about becoming like Jesus? What about your good works? If you're so wrapped up in your confession saves you, which is a very bloody justification by faith ideal, James said, okay, but there is something to learn from the other religions that aren't just, Jesus is my Lord and Savior and I never have to become a better person. Maybe, maybe there are some works that, that justify the faith as well. Well, that, that really upset both the Apostle Paul and Martin Luther. And so maybe the, maybe the beauty is in the tension, the tension between faith and works. We don't have to, we don't have to uh, be polarized by it. We can find the wisdom in the middle. How about that? However, this was not taught by the earlier church fathers. So that's what we're talking about. Augustine uh, was kind of in contrast to some of the early patristic uh, church fathers like uh, Pelagius, who was later considered um, a heretic because he- Uh Pelagius, who was later considered um a heretic because he didn't believe we were born in sin. He believed that Pelagius believed we were born with some innate goodness. Uh Augustine comes in and says, we are morally depraved. Depravity becomes. Uh a doctrine in Augustine uh theologies. Um and so Augustine is, we are completely born depraved. Animalistic, it is only by the grace of God that we can even tap into any goodness. But Pelagius said, I'm not sure that I am part of Adam's curse. I'm not sure that I am just an evil person. I believe there is some good. That that's born into humanity. He was called a a heretic for that. And then later on, uh Thomas Aquinas, Immanuel Kant. Uh other seventeenth century, well, Thomas Aquinas early on, uh church doctrine, but. Uh seventeenth century philosophers like Kant that are Catholic revered scholars. Are just uh mirroring some Pelagian theology, but they're not considered heretics. Why? Because today's hero, heret, sorry, today's heretic is tomorrow's hero. We could say it in terms of Pelagius. Yesterday's hero was the future's, uh yesterday's heretic was the future's hero. So what's the difference in Aquinan theology and Kantian philosophy and in Pelagius? The only difference, of course, that's generalizing, but the main difference is time. When Pelagius said it, oh, this is so new, it must be demonic, we must kill Pelagius. Yeah, because ignorance and because of comfortability, prevailing cultures, hegemony, you hear me say that words. Hegemony just means the prevailing dominant culture, that's all that means. And so Pelagius was going, okay, I. Just because I disagree with you guys doesn't mean I'm necessarily wrong. Certainly not a heretic seventeen or fourteen hundred years later. Uh Immanuel Kant says, hmm, I don't think Pelagius had it all wrong. Aquinas goes, did he have it all wrong? Yeah, well, they're not heretics now. So who who is a heretic today that we're calling heretic that will be a hero tomorrow?
You.
Brandy said, you, yes, me, Carlton Pearson, Shelby Spawn, uh yeah. Mike Williams is a heretic. Watch this, the Bishop Buddy, Marion Buddy who spoke. At the cathedral a few a few days ago. Called Satan worshiper by the Christian right, um reprobate. I heard I saw one post today, even her tone was just all the anger of Satan. It's like I I've been around a lot of preaching in my life. I've never heard a more gentle voice in my entire life. I've never heard someone speak the truth in love more gently. And I've heard a lot of preachers and I've been around some gentle people. My uncle Bishop John Mears was a very gentle preacher. Others that I could name, very, very gentle souls. But. When you are blind to yourself, it's hard to hear the love that is coming from somebody that's so beautiful. I applaud her, I certainly, uh the courage of her conviction and her gentle, her genteel manner. Uh I think exposed such hatred. Um whether you agree or disagree with her, her tone was not angry. Her 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 motivation was out of love, even if you disagree with her. Alright, uh we can see why such a concept will be popular in the halls of power of the church when we look at religion as what it is often. Uh what often it has been. What is that? A structure for controlling the thoughts and actions. Of others. Do you know that some religions prescribe how you're supposed to have sex? Some in uh Orthodoxy circles think you should not even see each other naked, you should have sex through a sheet. A hole in the sheet. Um others don't believe that that a woman should be able to even show her face. Not even your eyeballs can be seen. This is the pr- prudishness and puritanical expressions of sexuality control. Mechanisms, patriarchy uh in in many ways. Uh yeah, some believe that's uh this is this is getting in the weeds, so y'all forgive me, that. Sex should just be in one position, you shouldn't have any sort of diversities of things that you do. That is this what this God? Did God send us a specific Kama Sutra? To legitimize and illegitimize sexual positions and and days of purity and. Is this really God? God cares about our sex life? I I'm not sure the creator of the universe is really in your bedroom with you every night. Alright, the slander that each of us is born uh carrying uh a freight of original sin. And that the only adherence to ritual, uh only adherence to ritual will save us from everlasting torment. Gives the church a stranglehold on hearts and minds. I heard somebody question the other day. That uh Jesus was God because he had the power to forgive sin. Okay, so by that approach, by that argument, I am God. And of course, I I believe in that all of us are gods in some ways, but for the sake of argument. Jesus gave the power to forgive sin to the apostles. That is why some of the, in Christendom, you have to go to confession. The shepherd of the house is also the shepherd of your soul. And if you don't get the last rites over, you might not end up in heaven because. Jesus said these apostles have the right to either forgive or to remit sin, forgive it or to not forgive sin. That's really good for church attendance, isn't it? Oh, you did, you forsake the assembly? Well, I have the power to remit your sins, and so if you don't attend church. Sorry, I'm not forgiving your sins. That that's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, isn't it? It that seems, what was our prayer to tonight? Our prayer to God was common sense. It's a racket. Religion can be a racket uh in uh in that way. Uh even nonbelievers obey church dictates out of fear of sanction by the community. Do you know how many babies I dedicate every year? And not bemoaning it, it's, it doesn't take me but three or four minutes to dedicate babies, I'm glad to do it. They come to church. They get their baby dedicated. I've never seen him before and I'll never see him again. And I I try to say, like, wh- why are you here? Why why must your baby be dedicated? You're not part of a spiritual community. You don't come to church, I don't really even see you on Easter or Christmas. And so why do you need your baby dedicated? Well, because I'm I may not be believed like everybody else, but I don't want my baby's soul to end up in in hell because it's not baptized. Why do you believe that? But you don't read any of the rest of the text. You don't live in that spiritual application. All this superstition, I gotta get my baby baptized, cause oh my god, what if he or she were to die or, all that is fear construct. Even nonbelievers, as Bishop Pearson would say, that's a church dictate that people are afraid of, but they don't come to church. They don't respect the the ecclesia uh that Jesus set up. The gates of hell shall not prevail against this understanding of the Christ and the Christ-conscious mind. Uh all all of that is really rings true, what Bishop Pearson is saying. This indictment has been rooted into our consciousness. It is the curse of all religion. Humans of most religious persuasions are taught that iniquity. And criminality are inherent in them, or what we talked about Ca- uh Augustine, human depravity, born depraved. This falsehood, I I ask people all the time, they say, can't you tell that that we're born depraved? Children throw fits, they're selfish, they hit. They have to be taught and have to be popped on the hand, not to da 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 da. I said, that's true. My children, I had to correct my children, I had to bring my children up in a certain way so that they would understand. Respectfulness and and all that. I said, but I never taught my child how to hug. I never taught my child how to smile. Even my son, I never taught my son how to share his cookie with his sister, he just did it out of his the goodness of his heart. Where did that goodness come from? When a child, when a child, when a baby sees someone crying, you can see their little expression of concern. Why are you upset? Even they may, they may start crying if they see you crying. Where did that goodness come from? Where did that empathy, that more that ground of morality and being come from? You can argue it on both sides. I choose to see the glasses half full. That we are not born depraved, animalistic, even though we have, we are certainly animals in some ways. We are instinctive beings. But we also have innate goodness. There is also something very godlike on the inside of us. Which which part of that are you gonna feed? Yeah, let's feed it. The falsehood, uh this falsehood has been pounded into us for centuries to the point. Where it's now part of the global consciousness. Being human equals being fatally flawed. I like to be human. Uh religion has done a good job convincing us we were born bad and to be bad, yeah. But even uh if original sin were true, I love the if, let's 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 entertain the if. If original sin were true, it would have been canceled through Christ's atonement. Apostle Paul, sin reigned from Moses, from Adam to Moses. Okay, and then from Moses to this atoning work of Christ. But what is, what is the atonement if we are still born in sin? That word, that word there in Hemartia, the word, one of the words used for Greek words used for sin in the the Greek New Testament. It not only means offense, it actually, it's actually talking about the nature. And some of the some of the Greek derivations there, it's not just saying that the offense of the world has been taken away. Hemartia also hints to. Christ was dealing with the nature of humanity, even if there was a fallen nature, that comes into this whole sin. Um this whole soteriology or self salvific understanding of the finished work of Christ. Let's look at the passage of scripture again. The author writes, I was shaped in iniquity. The original Hebrew words and even uh the sentence structure can make the sentence. Mean many things. That's that was kind of question one. Is the sex, is sexual activity a sin? Is being born from people having sinful sex a sin? Or is just being born a sin? There's a little bit of ambiguity there. Maybe there Christianity has adopted all the above. Uh it is devilishly ambiguous, which means now we get to negotiate with the text. We get to project. Our own hangups into the text. Have you ever recognized that uh preachers who spend a lot of time. Preaching against sexual immorality, usually their shift comes out. Their dirty laundry is exposed. When I hear somebody going to it, I just go, oh, Lord. Dude, stay away from it. You're just, you're telling on yourself right now. We know what you got going. In the wee hours of the night, we we know what's going on. It is devilishly ambiguous, scant evidence for damning. An entire race. Thank you, CDB. Thanks for your your mind and for your courage. Alright, we're gonna talk tonight, uh and if you wanna talk more on question four, if you need just some prayer, if you just want. Somebody to tell you that it's gonna be okay, you're probably in the right place tonight. We are, um I believe, a sanctuary for um. For those who may not fit into the prevailing dominant hegemonic culture. Everyone is welcome and celebrated at Spirit and True Sanctuary. I am comfortable enough in my skin. To be comfortable enough with you expressing your authentic self in your skin. Isn't that really the true definition of? Of of self-confidence, self-esteem is that you don't, you're not insecure enough that you have to make everyone else be like you. That you can be your own unique expression and give everyone else their space to do that. Alright. Uh question one dealt with sin, if you wanna talk toward that. Question two dealt with uh the definitions of sin being control mechanisms and three. Is it ironic that the Christian right wants to remove? America's original sin from our from our educational textbooks. Public education, critical race theory to be removed from the textbooks, yet. We build mega churches, mega denominations on the teaching of humanity's original sin. I find that to be. Certainly problematic for all of the hypocrites out there, in Jesus's name. Alright, we can talk tonight.
Alrighty, well, really quickly, um let me just say, it's been a while since we've had something like this, but. We have Justin on YouTube who wants to say that y'all are all brainwashed, which let me just say, Justin, if you think that. Expound a little bit, help us understand what you mean or what your question is or. How we can at least speak to a concern that you have, uh so. Uh we we may be brainwashed, but we sure are brainwashed for the good. No, I'm just teasing, but.
Well, I, Justin, I am brainwashed. Um my brain was conditioned um with dirt. And um with poison. Uh I was poisoned to think that uh that. The work of Christ was not quite finished, uh that the work of Adam was stronger than the work of Christ, first Corinthians fifteen. All men died in Adam without choice, without faith, without transgression. But men have to, men and women have to choose by faith, by belief, by confession to be in Christ. Uh that was, I had to wash my brain from that. I was, I was, my brain was poisoned to believe that. Uh that that human sexuality is monolithic, meaning that everyone is either completely. Uh everyone is completely heterosexual, born that way. That no one is ever born uh with with even different with with even two sexual organs, which is a scientific fact. That many babies forget, forget the um the behaviors that we might see in. So the same gender loving or Q plus community. Many babies scientifically are born uh with both genitalia. Um Jesus speaks to this in Matthew chapter nineteen, uh speaking of, forgive me, Q plus community, just bear with me. Uh speaks of the eunuch and he says, some people are struggling to understand this thing. But they are born that way from their mother's womb. Now, of course, he gives two other uh. Categories as well. They choose to be that way for the kingdom's sake. Eunuch just means a castrated male. Uh and then some are be be uh uh, I forget the the second category, but. There's two that are, they choose this lifestyle of being a eunuch or asexual in some ways. But the 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 first category gives us pause, it's problematic for the negotiations of heteronormativity. And that is that Jesus says they were born that way. So he doesn't say they were born gay. I wanna be clear with what Jesus does and doesn't say or recorded to say. A hundred years after Jesus left, by the way, the first gospel, Gospel of Mark was not even written. Until about a hundred and twenty or so, a hundred and twenty-seven uh common uh uh common era. Uh or AD if that's more to your vernacular. And so Jesus is very ambiguous when it comes to. Human sexuality. Yeah, I find that very, very interesting, but. Um I am a biblical scholar and theologian, and so Justin, I welcome your theological input if you have a scripture that you'd like to bring to me. Um but let's be, let's be grownups and not just say, not just be uh uh. Disparaging with little name-calling, you're just reflecting the prevailing political culture right now. Um and so say something intelligent to us and then we'll we'll certainly welcome what you have to say. Thanks for being here, Justin.
Uh Jared Johnson brought up, the Council of Trent said that anyone who doesn't believe in Adam's sin. Let them be, and I believe this is the right pronunciation, ananema. Anathema. A ban or a curse, that was from fifteen forty-six.
Yeah, uh I don't know if you guys are are Seinfeld fans, but. Anathema was used to describe the shiksa, uh Elaine had become a shiksa in the Jewish culture. Means kind of like a waitress or somebody. Um yeah, the councils of Trent, of Nacia, of Laodicea. Um really, um Jared, thank you for that input, really are just bishops from. Either either a specific location or surrounding locations coming together to decide what they think. The scripture really says. I I really like this. This is, this is a quote from Thomas Aquinas. Um he, Thomas Aquinas uh is really heralded as um a a church father, even though not part of the patristic voices. Thomas Aquinas said, any any um definition that humanity can have of God is an idol. That's paraphrasing, that's basically what uh that's Aquinan approach is that. Any construct that you can create in your humanity, because according to Immanuel Kant, God is unknowable. The creation can't fully know God, and so anything that is an approach to God has to be considered a journey. Not a systematic definition that becomes concretized or crystallized or doctrinalized. I know that that's that's scary to some of the denominations. Uh that that build their churches on systematic theologies, dictates, catechisms, dogmas. But for for the human creation, to say that they understand God is idolatry. Why did God tell Moses, I'm not gonna tell you my name? Because you want to to get into into the particularities of definitions and the whiteness. I'm not a what, I'm a who. The the, I am an essence, I am consciousness, I am awareness, I am presence, I am vibration. It's fine if you wanna say Jehovah Jireh, Nisi, Rapha, Sidcanu, Shalom, Shama. And all the different names for God, Elohim, uh El, El Yon, there's so many different names for God, but none of those are God's name. Why? Because God doesn't have a name. Humans want to name God so that they can define God. God, the closest thing I have found in my journey is God as I am. Everything else pales in comparison to the true essence of God. That's great, Jared, thank you.
Alright, let's jump into the actual questions here and um. Alright, let's jump into the actual questions here and, um, just a, a warning. First of all, Mike Williams sent me a text message while we've been on and said that. It was the kindest thing I've ever said to him for calling him a heretic. That's officially the sweetest thing you've ever said.
I'm in tears.
So he's gonna kick us off on a Mike Williams note here for question one. So is sex a sin, being born, all, all of that?
Well, Mike, Mike's a sexual center, but keep going, yes.
Yeah, he said, if you don't feel super nasty after sex, then it was both a sin and an underachieving waste of time.
How about, how about a little Janet Jackson into our conversation, Mike? It's Janet. Miss Jackson, if you're nasty. Nasty, nasty boys don't mean a thing. Any Janet Jackson fans out there? Yeah, uh, it is, it is certainly over sexualized. I will say this, I won't, I tried to give too much. Information here, Mike, um, because I don't want to disparage people from my past. But my family is five generations into ministry. Um, I'm a fifth generation minister coming from. Free Will Baptist Lutheranism, uh, and then kind of three generations of Pentecostal. My, my predecessors are charismatic really more. I would consider myself an interfaith minister, uh, with Pentecostal. With Pentecostal worship style. But mostly I teach from the Judeo-Christian canon of scriptures, the sixty-six books or to Bible. However, Mike, um, there are stories in my family that were passed down of ministers, which there are. I would think maybe a hundred or so ministers in, in, in our family tree or family line. Of, of, of sexual frustration because of the, the prudishness, the. The Eurocentric, um, kind of pilgrim puritanical, uh, sense of, of sexual piety. That was passed into Christianity and then westernized Christianity where. The, the preachers and their spouses didn't have really a healthy sexual relationship. And so they lived the life of desperation because they certainly didn't want to. Uh, be found, uh, with, uh, going outside of their marriage vows or boundaries in some ways. And so they kind of lived the life. My dad would describe his ancestors. As they lived a life of, of just kind of sexual, quiet sexual frustration. And a life of a kind of inner fantasy. I find that to be very sad. Um, and, and some didn't, some went outside the, the, the bonds of marriage, whatever that means. Um, people said that Jesus instituted marriage, but. He also questioned it, who, that's not what heaven is like. We're not married in heaven, so we could, we could teach it from any aspect if you, if Jesus is very. Um, problematic if you want a monolithic approach to marriage. Jesus doesn't give us a monolithic approach. He gives us a multivocal approach, so. But I would say this, Mike, that I think especially you being around mega church Christian circles for so long. There is such a dysfunction in ministry, uh, ministers, ministry relationships, ministry marriages. Uh, because they, they just exist in frustration and they don't know how to get their needs met and they don't wanna divorce and. They don't wanna disparage the church and so they, they just live in that way. I, I find it very, I, I'm empathetic toward it, although I. I believe that we should try to hold some type of standard, uh, and the standard to me is just about respect. It's not about. Necessarily monogamy, if, uh, uh, that works for me, um, doesn't mean that we, even those. Those of us who, who choose monogamy doesn't mean that we don't, we're not sensual creatures. We see things that are beautiful to us. Um, and I, and I'm not disparaging polygamy or, um, polyamorous relationships in any way. If that works for you, work it. It, it, it's not really, it's not my path. Um, but I, I am empathetic to ministers who, who suffer from sexual piety, especially with spouses. Who don't seem to be responsive, that just, it's a sad life. Thanks, Mike.
Sorry, I was, uh, jumping into, make sure everyone knows that. We have people acting up in the chat tonight, so you know, we gotta take care of them and. Sharnese is ready to take somebody out. Okay, let me, um.
She, sheath your sword.
Everybody, I'll, I'll take care.
Sharnese is my peoples, that's my peoples right there.
Alright, Richard shared, I personally think calling sex is a, a sin is a ridiculous concept. Without sex, mankind would never exist.
Yeah, that, if you've seen the movie, um, The Devil's Advocate, Richard. Um, the Al Pacino character who's this devil character. He gives it kind of a, 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 a homily to Keanu Reeves's character, who's the, kind of the pious young lawyer. And he's kind of bringing an interesting narrative. He says. So let me get this straight, the God who gives you passion tells you don't use it. Ah, does taste, but don't touch. Or, or touch, but don't taste, taste, but don't, don't desire, look, but don't lust. It, it's kind of just a, um, a, a, a difficult pushback against why would, thi- think about this, Richard. I have, I have been in some very impoverished places in my ministry. Uh, specifically, uh, the Amazon basin, uh, up in near, near and through Iquitos, Peru and South America. Where there's not enough food to feed the families. It's, it's literally, it's a, what we would call it, it's a food desert. And they, at different times of the year, they, they basically survive on fish. Tried to, and if they don't catch enough fish in the, in the river, their families go without. Um, and yet even with their s- very skinny, um. You can kind of see every sinew in their body, uh, even their emaciated bodies, they still have a sex drive. How about this? Homeless and houseless people are still having children. Even though they're living without shelter, their sex drive is still very strong. I don't care if you're sick. I don't care if you're houseless, if you're hungry, your sex drive doesn't go away necessarily. Even as you get older, as men and women lose estrogen and testosterone. You still feel the desire, even if you can't. You know, perform like you did when you were, what is it, what is it, uh, the Commodore said. Make a, an, make an old man wish for younger days. She's a brick house. I, if I was twenty-five, I would just kill you tonight. Yeah. Even older people still have thoughts and, and desires. Why would God give us this? Well, the church has rationalized that. It's all for procreation. So you can't use birth control, you gotta have seventeen children. You can't clothe them, you can't educate them, you can't feed them, you can't medicate them, can't give each one of them the attention they deserve, but by God, you gotta have them. You know, why would God give us these passionate desires? If we're not supposed to express them at some point. I find that to be very, very sensically. Uh, ignored in some of the Christian dynamic and I, and I want to be very charitable because I'm. Um, part of my, and part of my cohort and my doctoral, uh, work, I'm. I am with a Catholic priest, a couple of days a week and just a very genteel, intelligent, brilliant. Um, s- self-effacing, beautiful person. But I, I, I feel for him at times. He's a very handsome gentleman. And I don't think we have to deny sexual intimacy in order to love God. I just think that, that, that foundationally is problematic and now we see. Anything, any desire that is pushed down for long enough will become perversion, become molestation. In some ways, and so, uh, I thank you for raising that. Thank you for lifting that, Richard.
Alrighty, I am trying to see, that might be it for number one, so feel free guys to jump in if you want. There's lots of you guys on YouTube. It's not too late. Don't worry, I'll, I'll clean this chat up, um.
If you're in the chat, welcome, even if you came to discredit us, to call us names, to say. Why should this man be speaking? He comes from sexual dysfunction. Whatever, you know, you're, you're welcome here. You're, you are welcome here. Bring to us a, an intelligent question. Don't, don't just bring to us your, your. Your disruption, br- bring us something intelligent. We'll engage you tonight. We love you. We're glad you're here.
Alrighty.
As Randy kicks you out of the chat.
And everyone else, you should see, you got a whole, we got a whole.
You can't see.
I can just see all of us standing together. We had such a good time at the conference. And, uh, it's just.
I bet you won't say it to my face. If you were in this room, you would say it to my face.
I just love you guys so much.
Put that forum on.
I just love you so much. Oh, Ca- and Cat Bell's in here tonight too. She'll be right there with us. Okay, so please let us know though, but I, I guess I have a question. Um, so i- i- are you, is the question suggesting, okay, is, is sex a sin? Let's just say your answer to that is yes. Then being born from a sinful act is a sin. Is that part two is, okay, so. I mean, me and you, DE, you and I, let, let's just say we had sex before we got married. We won't, we won't confirm or deny.
That's a lie.
We would never confirm or deny. Let's just say we did, so we sin. Are, are you, are you asking our children being born, so because we sin, they were born in sin, what is? That's just so heavy for me and, or just being born a sin, just being born a sin, and that's the thing is, is that what we believe is? Because we're part of Adam's fallen race that we just automatically and I just, I just can't chew on that. So is that really what is taught? I think I'm just so far removed from it that that's just baffling for me.
And it's, it's ambiguous, so we don't know exactly what the writer is saying. But let, let me, let me throw, throw this out to everybody. There is a, there is a predominant, um, doctrine. And I won't say the religion, but just, just, just be charitable with me tonight, people. That Mary was, was a, the, the virgin birth was very specific. There's, there's two reasons that Mary had to be a virgin. Number one, because sex and the, and the prudishness of. Of that, that Judaic expression was can, just considered. Everything in Judaism about following Torah is about being intentional. You're not supposed to be driven by your appetite. It's supposed to be schedule sex. We don't have sex at this time. And so spontaneity, spontaneity is giving into, um, a sense of irrational. Ex- because everything about following Torah and keeping God happy and staying in the land, the land of Israel that God has given us that we. Took from Canaanites that we disparaged through Ham and Ham's son, Canaan. Woo, it's a lot, it's a lot that you want, um, has to be intentional. So something like a spontaneous. Uh, sexual expression or, well, you know, Wednesday is our sex day. Why, why are you touching me on a Friday? Well, because I saw you walk by and I, I'm attracted to you. I love you. I wanted to express this. That's, that's not part of orthodoxy in religion. So for Mary. Mary could not have had sex to have Jesus because Jesus has to be divine. Why does Jesus have to be divine? Because the gospel writers are trying to prove his messianic nature. To speak to, to fulfill script prophetic scripture so that the Jews would accept him as the Messiah. So not only was Mary impregnated by the Holy Spirit, in no way impregnated by Joseph, because that would have been dirty and sinful. Mary was a perpetual virgin. Are you hearing me? Mary, they denounced that Jesus had a brother named Judas, a brother named, uh, a brother named James. Uh, uh, John, the be- the beloved, the beloved, the brother of, Jesus did not have siblings. And so when Jesus looked on the di- on his death, on the death of the cross, when he looked and said, behold, your mother. He was not speaking to a sibling, he was speaking to a play cousin. You know why? Because Mary never had sex. Why? Because sex is gross. Sex is dirty. Sex is sinful. All that does feed into, uh, the prevailing, uh, and I hate to say it, the prevailing Catholic culture. I've, I feel for the Pope, I feel for the priests, I feel for the cardinals and the bishops. I, I just, I, I don't think it's normal. I think you can love God and even give your life, uh, in service to God. Without denying or, or without demonizing sex in some ways, or making it sinful or. Uh, some kind of barrier between you and Christ. Anyway, that, it is what it is.
Alright, let's see. Elise shared, I don't think sex is a sin, but there are times that the act of sex can cause harm.
Yeah, uh, sex that is used, um, to hierarchical sex, which is really. At least that's really what the Bible forbids. The Bible does not forbid homosexuality. It forbids, uh, it forbids hierarchical social sexual, uh, sexuality. What does that mean? So if you, if you, if you study the words, the, the two words that are used. That, that become in nineteen sixty-seven or something, uh, or forty-seven, I have to do the research again. Become homosexual. Homosexual is not in the Bible. That's a compounded word that is made up. In, in a, in a modern translation. The original words that are used are the words Malakoi or Arsenacoitai. So welcome, welcome to the academic study of scripture. Neither one of those words means homosexual. What it means is one of them means an older man praying on a younger man. So in some way, and that, that's what we call pederasty. An older man praying or manipulating a younger man into sex. The other word specifically means, uh, it is forbidding a wealthy man from being. Stay with me, a bottom or being penetrated by an, by an unwealthy man. Think about that, so. So it's not a sin to, it's not a sin for a rich man to penetrate a, a poor man. That's okay. God doesn't care about that. But if a poor man is a top and penetrates a, 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 a rich man. God doesn't like that because God wants to keep the wealth and the hierarchy and aristocracy. And the prevailing dominant culture in its place. This is where the church falls into. Demonizing homosexuality. It's ridiculous. It's because people don't have an academic approach to the scriptures and they don't know what the hail. They're talking about, and so it becomes problematic, but I, I appreciate you lifting that, Elise. It's good.
Antonio Knox said, teach sir, I just love it here.
Thanks for your message, by the way.
Uh, let's see here. Jason asks, can the Bible really be used as the standard for sexual purity? Doesn't the same book seem to be okay with rape and incest? It also gives advice that it is better to marry than to burn with lust. That is not good advice.
Uh, teach sir, teach, is, was that, is that Jason?
That was Jason.
Thank you, Jason, yeah. Uh, miss you, miss, I, I see your face as you're questioning that. Yeah, it, it's, it's very, um, it's very paradoxical, isn't it, Jason? Um, you know, the, the idea that a woman. Was seen in a field because she dared leave the, the visual sight of her father. She dared take a walk. And, and some other man saw her walking in her fully clothed robe and desired her because. Ooh, she has sexy fingers. And she is raped, you know, Alt- or L Testament or Levitical codes. Means that not only is that woman obligated to marry her rapist, but that man is now obligated to care for that woman. I mean. The, that's why the apostle Paul says, if you live by the law, you'll die by the law. You know, the, the, the letter kills, but the spirit gives life. Um, you know, Moses gives us ten, or God gives Moses ten commands, but that's actually not true. Did you guys know this? Hammurabi, the Egyptian transcendentalist really, um. Had, had what's called a code or codes of Hammurabi that predates the Mosaic law. And the ten commandments are kind of taken from the codes of Hammurabi. Welcome, welcome to Spirit and Truth. And so Moses did not, God did not take tablets and. With the lightning rod, Moses wrote, or a scribe of Moses, fifteen hundred years later. Wrote these commands that were really just kind of assimilated, or, uh, how would we say? Um, plagiarized from the Egyptian codes of Hammurabi. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't. Give credence to don't kill, don't steal, don't lie. It's a good thing. We shouldn't lie on each other. We shouldn't bear false witness. We shouldn't take from our neighbor. We shouldn't lie on people. I, I'd have no problem. But i- in the, in the Christian and Judaic supremacy narratives, we want to establish. The Christian Judaic God over the rest of all these Egyptian and ancestral, uh, and indigenous gods. When we, most of our religion comes from them. The, even the garden, the garden metaphor or the garden mythology comes from other areas. The, the, the Noahic flood, Noah's flood myth comes from the Epic of Gilgamesh. And so, you know, this whole, this whole narrative that of, of, um, what's it called? Um, of, of, of divine right, that we are the, we are the Christians, we are the, we are the prevailing culture. We borrowed most of what we know from paganism and Egyptian culture and, uh, and Sumerian African culture. And so just, just, just chill out a bit. I'm thinking that Christianity is. and so just 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 chill out a bit I'm thinking that Christianity is is the is the the end all be all we're a mutt religion that borrowed from everybody and then tried to say this was these are our ideas they're not our ideas we grafted them in and then created denominations from them it's good
Jacoby said I think a lot of that goes back to people believing that we must suffer in order to go to heaven don't give in to our normal desires instead make ourselves suffer by abstaining
you know Ja- Jacoby you raised something that's really important um in the deconstruction or reimagining of scripture and especially of its practical application that that Jesus had to suffer to redeem humanity which we know that's not true Jesus shed blood to speak our language which was the language of blood coming out of the worship of the god Molek which offered children innocent Paschal children and Pascal lambs to appease the god Molek innocent blood hello that's where Abram Abraham comes out of the era of the Caliphs and then passes that into the Judaic Christian belief of blood sacrifice atonement Passover all that's part of Christianity and so in that way suffering becomes redemptive Jacoby how if any man follow me let him pick up his cross carry me deny your sexual impulses fast meat on Fridays uh don't go to the show don't listen to the radio don't go to a Beyonce concert don't do anything that's pleasurable live your life as an ascetic come out and be separate from among them because now through this suffering there is redemptions your slavery slaves obey your masters this is part of your reasonable service spouses if you're married to an abusive spouse by your chaste conduct you can win your suffering in your in your marriage is has a redemptive quality that is a very insidious doctrine Jacoby thank you for lifting that we do not have to suffer fasting sackcloth ashes is that what Jeremiah brings to us I lo- I love when Jeremiah says does your starvation please God does you rolling around in ashes and wearing this sackcloth is that what God wants is that really how you prove your love to God through suffering is is suffering redemptive or do we feed the hungry do we clothe the naked do we welcome the stranger hello do we welcome the stranger that is that is how we prove our love for God for self and humanity thanks Jacoby
yeah Kim's response to that was Kim her responses well because Jacoby we've we've been taught that that is holiness and Jacobia responded exactly we were taught a lot of things that could make you think that God would quote deactivate our ticket to heaven it's so sad
Jacoby you've been deactivated sorry about that thanks Kim love you guys
Terry Johnson just said I heard one pastor say if it wasn't for fornication half of us wouldn't be here
he didn't have to do it yeah what was it the thank God for my mama without her I wouldn't be here I I'm not gonna get into all that thank you Terry that that gave me a lot of joy yes
okay so one more and then we'll move on to number two Shannon said I don't think that sex is a sin I also don't believe sex before marriage is a sin we asked that question one time on this show but like anything it must be done in decency and order and she said science says sex is to procreate and bond
you know s- sex in marriage before marriage i- it should be done with consenting humans who respect each other who um care for each other uh this whole idea of kinda like hit it and quit it I think that's a sin you know I I that's just my opinion I I don't think you should just use someone for sex even if even if you both agree this is just a sexual thing I think after the act before the act you should be sensitive are you okay are you uh do you talk about anything how was your day you know we don't ju- it doesn't just have to be animalistic um and so that's just that's just my opinion you guys certainly don't take that as gospel but and even even in the some of the Asian cultures there is a sense of esteeming even the geisha who when a man uh is still has a sexual appetite but perhaps his wife has gone through some sense of menopause and doesn't have the same drive that she once had the geishas are seen as as merciful helping men to get rid of their frustration or their angst or their hypertension or whatever and actually some of the wives in geisha cultures thank the geisha thank you thank you for helping my husband he driving me crazy over here you know um I'm not saying it's right wrong I that's I'm not the judge of that I'm just saying that we can't put our westernized uh puritanical lens on the whole world the whole world doesn't have to do it like us they don't have to dress like us they don't have to be like us if it works for you physically spiritually emotionally let it work
alright uh before I move on to number two just uh I I'm not sure what you were talking about earlier but I know you're gonna love this Luis Mel- Melancia is on he he said um
Louis Melancia is the is the senior minister of our sister networking church in Recife Brazil so welcome 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 our sister church from Brazil
yeah I think maybe I hope I'm reading the right comment here you maybe you edited it it I'm gonna read the edited version when it comes to the virginal birth we know that Matthew's translation Matthew one twenty three of Isaiah seven fourteen is wrong the word used in Isaiah is not virgin it is Alma young lady not a virgin
wow I I've ne- I've never known the etymology of that professor Professor Melancia thank you for that that certainly is added to my understanding e- if you get a chance email me that I'll put that down on my my little inclusion my inclusion notebook that helps us thanks Louis
Mary Lewis said D E I'm currently reading misquoting Jesus isn't that your she said I don't know what to tell you
so Bart Erman is a is a tenured scholar of religion at uh University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill he's kinda considered America's scholar some scholars might push back on that some um but Bart Erman is is an atheist but he in no way is trying to convert Christians to atheism he actually he actually says I prescribe to the teachings of Jesus he just he struggles to reconcile the suffering of humanity or theodicy with uh with theistic ideas of God's intervention into human affairs it's and it's certainly it's a it's a a worthwhile conversation but you can read this fabulous scholar Barton who understands Jesus like few I've ever heard and you don't have to become an atheist you don't have to convert from atheism to Christianity we don't have to convert each other to learn to acculturate from each other I'm glad you're reading it's good
alright number two are religious definitions of sin ultimately control mechanisms Bobby Howard shared religious definitions are all written in concrete no room for change or forgiveness religious rules are crossing lines with no room for return
yeah think about the control Bobby of of marriages of people who are it I don't believe unequally York means with unbelievers I think that's really disparaging I don't I don't even perceive there are any unbelievers when people say that I go ooh that's ugly why would you call someone an unbeliever they believe in many things they're not an unbeliever because they don't believe like you that's a that's really a hegemonic projection however uh in that narrative Bobby um the guilt of trying to force people to stay in abusive or neglectful marriages that's that's difficult isn't it yeah it's the the if the church controls the definition and the narrative they control people thanks Bobby
alright Richard shared yes they are just another form or means similar to the Old Testament Ten Commandment laws God gave Moses ten and he created an additional six hundred plus laws tell us what not to do often only encourage or or telling us what not to do often only encourages us to do what we are told not to do
imagine Richard the god of the universe whatever that is I don't have a definition for it being really concerned about what fabrics we wear so God is Versace or Louis Vuitton or Calvin Klein God cares that you wear mixed fabrics and if you do Richard it's an abomination what the heck God doesn't care what fabrics you wear that's men's ideas of God that's a control mechanism thanks Richard
alright I'm just checking one more time I don't see anymore for number two so let's move on for number three do you find it ironic that Christian fundamentalists want to erase America's original sin from history books while building mega churches on humanities original I'll read Bobby again first I find it ironic that Christians want to erase the original sin from books churches are ruling and reigning on disobedience eating of the tree of good and evil beginning with Adam and Eve
yeah that's how we isn't it interesting Bobby that we we set up religions on the basis of what got us kicked out of the garden how do we how do we even justify that the only think about the ambiguity the moral ambiguity of the garden there are no laws there are no there are no there's nothing forbade except to know the difference in or to eat of eat of all the all the trees are good all the trees are good to eat from look at except the tree that disparages the other trees the judgment of the other trees who told you you were naked and so we set up Christian religions on the idea of morality the deciphering of right and wrong what do we perceive is right and wrong well usually that's culturally driven what's right and wrong for this specific culture this the south and north the west the Midwest the Asia uh Africa South America morality is different in every part of the world because there are different cultures and so we set up all these religions based on an idea that got us kicked out of the garden the knowledge of good and evil thanks
uh let's see okay I am gonna read Shannon's comment we're just gonna we're just gonna go for it's gonna it's ironic hypocritical and bullshit
my my professor today Shannon
my sentiments
said uh tenured professor at Emory I had class today he said many Jewish theologians and rabbis believe the Trinity is bullshit because of course in Judaism the idea is there's only one God and then as Judaism intersects with Christianity well there are there is one God but three expressions and it offends Jewish rabbis because Jesus doesn't come in the Messianic narrative of what they were what they prophesied him to be so Matthew and Luke try to force Jesus into the Israeli prophetic narrative to prove he is the Messiah and the rabbis are like I just wanna raise the BS flag to this all your Trinitarian teaching doesn't come around until about four hundred A D or common era and that's craziness and so yes my professor today in a religious environment use the word bullshit so thank you Shannon you're welcome
we don't usually we don't usually go there um let's see Richard said as far as I am concerned their efforts to erase America's original sin are just another form of sin that is if they use the same criteria to define what is actually a sin
yeah let me let me say this Richard charitably as a white heteronormative male um I have been exposed to environments uh of of critical race theory uh especially academic environments where uh people either of color or of the Q plus community began to berate me berated me they have no knowledge of my history of course I present my whiteness my maleness my heterosexuality presents a certain way they don't know that my mother was shot at during civil rights they don't know that my parents were sued for marching with Dr. King for a million dollars in the sixties they don't know that I led a a marriage equality pro gay rights march in two thousand and six or three I I forget which year it was literally twenty years ago I was I was lobbying for marriage equality they just see my skin and they begin to in in a setting berate me for my whiteness and I wanna say ho- hold up I I know that I look like the prevailing culture but you don't know me you don't know that that I literally have lost hundreds and thousands you know that even Richard after our all of our scandals we still had like over two thousand members if you remember you've been here a long time I was still preaching to two thousand people on Sundays I chose to go into inclusion after that I chose to be a voice speaking truth to power and so I have as a white ally champion according to Brady Brady's change champion I've been exposed to critical race theory pointing in my face you white man listen to me and I wanna say I I I appreciate I appreciate your anger but I'm not that guy if we wanna have a civil conversation I'm glad to have it but you're assuming that I am part of the prevailing narrative so I get I get the pushback from some white allies that say however I'm also empathetic to the overreaction or to the defense mechanism that says we have been oppressed for all these years by people who look like you you're gonna take it so I go okay it's okay I I get it but you don't know me you don't know what I've given up to be part of this this process so I I get the other side of the the argument as well Richard however for white Christian privileged nationalists to want to remove a painful history because it indicts their ancestors in some ways yet build churches on sin sin emerge original sin narratives it seems very problematic and hypocritical to me I would say as a white male heterosexual male that I think critical race theory should always be part of our history books but I think it should be taught in a way that doesn't point fingers at at teenage white students who may or may not be part of that narrative they may be saying hey I I'm an ally I I want to be inclusive I want to be a a change champion I just think it needs it's diffi- it there's so many complexities to the way it's taught but removing it I think is really ri- ridiculous for our history um thank you Richard
alright let's see Jared added for number three and I just wanted to mention I'm pretty sure that this is a uh also a a white male I I don't know much more about Jared but it's just i- i- it's just part of be- because following what you just said of course they want to erase the original sin because they don't want to own up to it they don't want it to be taught in schools because they they need it to be addressed or excuse me they they need it to be erased once it's erased we can repeat it and of course they cling to their precious original sin because that is the way they continue to be controlled and to control
yeah D E I diversity equity inclusion in governmental spaces was revoked today it's a difficult moment I I'll say this Jared I was speaking at a almost an all African American church I say that it I don't know that everyone presents as African American some just Americans some Americans from Africa you know there's there's some diversity in the way that you want to be known as I I get that um but there's a historical church in Atlanta that I speak at two or three times a year and my last name is Polk uh and they always invite me back they want me to speak it's a it's I consider them a sister church I love the bishop of the house we are very close friends but about two times ago when I spoke there one of their members came up and said she was of a person of color she said you know my last name is Polk and I said yeah I I didn't know that she said you know what that means don't you and I went possibly what she was saying is there's it's it's very likely that some Polk a couple hundred years ago owned her her ancestors that's embarrassing for me it's hard yet I need to hear it I need to 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 feel it I didn't I didn't necessarily do it but it it needs to be brought up i- if if we don't know history we are damned to repeat it and so it's even even as a white change champion and ally in those spaces sometimes I'm confronted with it and I'm like uh that's rough I I'm sorry I I didn't do that but if my ancestors did it I'm I'm very sorry I I will use my privilege as a platform to try to change it that's all I know to say but it can be uncomfortable thanks Jared
alright I think we're gonna wrap it up I have been out of town for two days
it's all your fault you kept asking the questions
friends are here on this there's so many of you on we love you but I've been out of town for two days I drove in I'm so glad I didn't have any of the storm hit where I was I drove in tonight D is gonna take me for some Mexican food end on to end on a a Mike Williams note here he he basically was saying He he basically was saying the Trinity is like a polygamist trying to convince the police that he has only one wife manifested. In three separate women.
Mike gonna get saved one of these days.
She someone said, thank you for always being an ally here, look, remember guys, let me come say hello to everybody.
Bring your green green sweater over here.
Let me come say hello. Remember, I painted this at work. And it is, oh, I have my work badge on still. It I work for corporate, big huge corporate company, but I'm very proud to work for a company where we do these types of crafts at work. Occasionally, so.
Look at her straight ally. I do have to say that. My wife drove from Carrollton today with the threat of getting into snow and ice and all that to get back here to. Do the teaching tonight, I did. I have some food that we could eat here, but I know it comforts her to go get Mexican food, so we're gonna go get some Mexican food tonight. Um but I do wanna say um. There is a lot of altruism in what we do. Um you know. Brandy is by all rights a first lady. She could come into church Sunday with her. Her special hat and her gloves and sit on her perch and. But she's there before. Almost anybody else is in the building, other than maybe Benny and Billy Smith, thank you for what you do. She is navigating technology, teaching parts, working through. The minutia of what it takes to broadcast this both locally and internationally. And so in that way we refuse privilege. We you try to use privilege as platform, but when you give yourself as an ally to speak truth to power. You also give up some luxuries. You give up, I I I thought the other day I was I was at the inauguration of the new DeKalb CEO and I'm speaking at speaking for her. Uh at the ecumenical prayer breakfast to. Two hundred and fifty pastors in DeKalb County, which is the second wealthiest black county in the nation. And I thought when I stand in that space, they don't know that I clean up. Homeless people's shit. In the in our on our church. They don't know that I have to avoid black widow spiders when I clean out the gutters and. The downspouse, they don't know that my son and I. Every week cut the grass and spray weeds and spray hornets nest and. You should see us on the property spraying hornets and then running. Running as fast as we can to get away from the hornets. What are the bishops are doing that? You there's a price to be paid to speak truth to power, it's not always all privilege. I I recognize my privilege. But I also renounce it to be an ally, Brandy does too, she could be a. She could receive a big old salary from the church to do nothing but look as Rihanna says, sit sit still look pretty.
No, the church can't pay me, can't pay me what.
Our our little church can't afford. The point I'm making is these are conscious choices that we make. And so thank you for your charitable ability, I I know that you guys know that I'm white, that I'm. Privilege, but we also try to live a life to not use to use our privilege as a platform. To help architect love.
Well, listen to this Murdoch shared, thank you for always taking the time to explain. So patiently, I always get more clarity on questions that I have. That makes me so happy, that just, yes, big old hug to you.
Well, thank you guys, I'm gonna thank you for your love. I'm gonna um uh kind of forego our affirmation tonight. I'll encourage you to give if you can, if you if you desire to help support what we're doing. And I do wanna take just a moment to encourage you to get a friend either to come with you in person or virtually Sunday. I have to give you my sermon title for Sunday cuz it is zesty and it's all up in all, it's all up in my heart. Here's my here's my sermon title for Sunday. Christianity has lost Jesus. But I found him at Disney World.
Oh Lord.
Christianity lost Jesus. But I found him at Disney World. Anybody curious? Hope to see you on Sunday morning, alright guys, we love you, go in peace, we'll see you again soon.
Okay, I'm trying to get off, keep waving at everybody.
Keep waving.